This conference will now be recorded.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, let's get started. All right. We are recording. Notice is hereby given that the Lago Vista City Council is holding a regular meeting on Thursday, May 20th, 2021 at 5:35 PM as prescribed by VTC government code section 551.041 to consider the following agenda items. Sandra, please note, we have all of our council members in attendance. We'll start with executive session. We will convene into a closed executive session pursuant to sections 551.071 Advice of Council, 551.072 Real Property, 551.074 Personnel, Section 551.087 Economic Development, Texas Government Code, and Section 1.05 Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct regarding A consultation with legal counsel regarding and possible action concerning any regular meeting agenda item requiring confidential attorney-client advice necessitated by the deliberation or discussion of said item as needed. B deliberation regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of the acting city manager. And we convene at 5:36 PM. There's my note, 5:36.
All right, so now the council members. Council members can hear me too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So I just wanted to say hello to the mayor and to the council members.
Sheila.
Yeah, just wait to your turn when you're called upon, please.
Oh, okay, all right.
I'll call on you.
You do that.
I need some authority. I don't have the hammer, Dave.
No, you do.
Oh, well.
Do it also here.
All right, so we are recording. All right, we reconvene from executive session into open section to act as deemed appropriate at 6:34 PM. To act as deemed appropriate in city council's discretion regarding A, any necessary action regarding any regular meeting agenda item.
No action.
Any necessary action regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of the acting city manager.
No action.
No action.
All right, we will move into our regular meeting agenda. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance to the U.S. and the Texas flag. So if you will, please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
The United States of America. And to the旗帜 which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one day under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you all very much. All right, we start with citizen comments. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council is prohibited from acting or doing other than factual responses to specific questions, any items not on the agenda. I will start with our rules of procedure, rules governing city comments. A maximum of 30 minutes is devoted to receiving comments from the public on each agenda item. Each speaker is limited to one presentation per meeting and a maximum time limit of three minutes on any item except for a public hearing item. No individual may address city council without submitting a speaker card at least five minutes prior to the beginning of the meeting. The card must clearly state the subject or issue on which the citizen wishes to speak. If the subject matter does not pertain to city business, the mayor shall advise the individual and/or make recommendations as to how they may get the issue addressed. The mayor can consider comments from citizens that did not submit a request as time permits. Citizens speaking on agenda items shall restrict their comments to the subject matter listed. Citizens speaking on non-agenda items shall only speak on matters pertaining to city business or issues which the council would have the authority to act upon if brought forth as an agenda item. Council may not act upon or discuss any issue brought forth as a non-agenda item except to A, make a statement of specific factual information given in response to the inquiry, or a recitation of existing policy in response to the inquiry. Any deliberation of or decision about the subject of the inquiry shall be limited to a proposal to place the subject on the agenda for a subsequent meeting. Proper respect, decorum, and conduct shall prevail at all times. Impertinent, slanderous, or personal attacks are strictly prohibited, and violators may be removed from the council chambers. No placards, banners, or signs may be displayed in the council chambers or city hall. Exhibits relating to a presentation are acceptable. Arguing, intimidation, or other disruptive behavior is prohibited. Discussion and/or debate are acceptable only on items specifically listed on the agenda. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stomping of feet, applauding, whistles, yells, or any type of disruptive behavior is prohibited. Applause of appreciation may be acceptable when recognizing a significant event or achievement. Council meetings are the workplace to carry out the business of the city of Lago Vista. Therefore, any conduct that could constitute harassment in the workplace is prohibited. In all cases, the mayor shall preside over the council meeting and ensure that proper conduct and decorum is adhered to. The mayor shall preserve order and decorum, and if necessary, shall cause to be silenced or removed from the council chamber any person speaking out of order or disrupting the order of the meeting. I have no one that has signed up to speak, so as time allows. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address city council on a non-agenda item? And I see the hand of Ms. Jean-Jeen.
Thank you, Mayor, for recognizing me. And I'm going to apologize ahead of time in case this item is on the agenda because I haven't fully read the agenda. So apologies if this is the case. Though what I wanted to bring up and would like input as to what to do is here while back, I think it was before the end of the year, previous year, the Shoreline Ranch was on the road to be repaired, and it was taken off for some reason. And so my, what I'm asking is for input with regard to Shoreline Ranch. It has three significant, only three significant potholes, so to speak, for lack of a better word. They're all on the, one is, one little one, it's little, like maybe 10 inches in diameter, but it's deep, is in the middle, and then there's two on the west side. And in the, shortly after you pass Austin Boulevard there, it's a stop sign. And then there's one other one, just as you're turning from Shoreline Ranch onto Lake Shore Boulevard, my street. And, and I'm wondering what I need to do or what can be done to try to get, since the road crew seemed to be moving back in our direction again, to get that back on the agenda, to get those four areas repaired. I know I pay a lot, a lot, a lot of taxes, and I have no services other than trash. So this is, these, they're only going to get bigger, especially that one little one that's deep in the middle of the road, in the next month or so. So I'm just wondering if there's possible to do anything at all, and I appreciate any and all input, if it's possible.
All right, so step one, you did what you needed to do. You came to us and let us know. You've got all your staff, department heads listening in, so they are aware of the situation. In addition, if you don't mind, just send Sandra an email, and she will pass that along to public work and see what they can do for it.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience? Let's see, hang on just a second. I see that, hold on just a second. All right, I would recognize Richard Bone at this time. Good to see you, sir.
Three hours ago, I sent you a letter to pass out to the council members, and I also asked to speak, so.
So I don't think we're going to be done by seven at the break this point. If you let people know, and she can.
Standby. I do not have the mute button.
I muted him, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So, Mr. Bone, you have frozen. I do see your mic is still on, though. You have the floor, so you can continue to address us.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I won't be able to do that because it's on the agenda.
He says it's on the agenda. Oh, it's on the agenda?
Yeah, so I'll have to wait.
Okay. All right, just make sure you raise your hand, get my attention again.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the audience?
Sheila Nichols.
Sheila Nichols. You're muted, and if you're going to speak about your agenda item, you're on the agenda, so.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
So you don't have to talk now.
I don't have to talk now?
Well, if you're wanting to talk on your agenda item, that is still upcoming. This, this time is for things that are not on the agenda. You are on the agenda.
Right, okay.
Okay, is that what you were going to talk about?
Right.
Yes.
The talks, right.
I'll get to you in just a minute.
Okay, we, because we have a time element problem here.
Okay. You're coming up fast.
Okay.
Anybody else in the audience have a non-agenda item? All right, we will move on to items of community interest pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.041. The city council will report on the following items. A, suppression, thanks, gratitude, and condolence. Information regarding holiday schedules, recognition of individuals, reminders regarding city council events, reminders regarding community events, health and safety announcements. All right, and I will start off, first of all, I would like to express my gratitude on behalf of my wife Catherine for everybody, not only the staff and council, but everybody in the city that expressed their condolences to my wife over the loss of her mother. It's greatly appreciated, all the cards, letters, Facebook posts, the flowers, greatly appreciated. And on behalf of my wife Catherine, I want to thank all of y'all. It's greatly appreciated. Holiday schedules, we have Memorial Day coming up. City Hall will be closed for Memorial Day. City council events, I would like to update y'all, we had our executive session regarding our city manager semifinalist interviews last Tuesday. We narrowed it down to five finalist. Since then, one has withdrawn, so we have four finalist. They will be coming into the city on Wednesday, June 2nd, to meet with staff, certain members of staff. And then Thursday, they, we will have interviews with our council members. We will narrow it down to our two finalist, who will meet again on Friday. And hopefully on Friday, June 4th, we will be able to announce an offer has been made to a city manager candidate. Community events, again, we have Memorial Day coming up, and I'm going to ask for some help from my veterans, because I am not available on Memorial Day. And as far as I know, right now, we do not have any events scheduled for Memorial Day. So I know we've only got about 10 days, but, you know, if we can get something put together where the veterans, or anybody, the citizens of Lago can come and pay their respects to those who have passed away, Memorial Day, it would be greatly appreciated. COVID updates, Travis County and the city of Austin have dropped to level two, which opens up a few more things, group gatherings, they, you know, things are loosening up with vaccinations and everything. We have posted the information regarding what level two pertains to as far as recommendations and requirements. Basically, if you're vaccinated, you're pretty much free to do whatever. If you're not, they still recommend that you wear masks and stuff, maintain your social distancing. I think the key thing, though, is your businesses. Your businesses still have the ability to require masks. They don't have to, but they can. So it's, it's still in the hands of the businesses whether they would like, like you to wear a mask while you're inside or not. As far as the city goes, we are opening up the doors, I believe, on June 1st to allow citizens to conduct business inside city hall.
In the lobby.
It'll be in the lobby. You will be able to come into the doors. We have the glass partitions. You'll be able to work with utilities, development services, and court personnel in person. You do not have to stand outside and do it through the loudspeaker anymore. That'll be June 1st. Let's see here. Our 2020 Consumer Confidence Report for the public water system for the city of Lago Vista has come out. This document here, it is on our website. You can go and see the TCEQ report for our water system. And it notes on here that as far as all the things, contaminants that may be present, we have zero violations as far as our city water supply. So our report is, once again, exceptional. We did have one note down here. We have, we have to notify people that the results of our lead tap water monitoring to the consumers. We are, the water was actually tested, so if we pull water from somebody's household, we're supposed to let them know that, what the results were. We failed to follow up with the spots where we drew the water from. So we got a note that for three months, we didn't, we forgot to notify the people. So we did have a violation on our notifications, but I could say all the contaminants were with well below standards, and we got no violations. And this is on our website for everybody to see. Anybody else have anything? That's all I have. Yes.
So first thing I want to do is say thank you for, with the Lions Club, had their golf tournament this past Saturday, went off with that hedge, want to thank the sponsors, the donors, the volunteers, the players, the court staff. It was a great event, raised lots of money for charity, and everything went well, the weather even held off for us, it was really good. And then the other thing I wanted to say is the Lions barbecue team is having their memorial barbecue cutoff is tomorrow night at 5 o'clock to put your order in for whole briskets, half briskets, rack of ribs, and porkloins. And so if you go to logolionsclub.org on there, I've got a brown button, you click it, and it brings up the poster, gives you all the information about what we're selling and who to contact. So I would just encourage folks to do that if they can. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Counselor Marion. We cannot hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Ah, yay. Okay, I have several things for Lago Vista ISD. The first is a big congratulations to the Lago Vista High School baseball team, who are the 2021 Bi-District Camps. So congratulations to the players, the coaches, parents, sponsors. Lago Vista Visual, Lago Vista High School Visual Arts. Lance took first at the University of Texas Art Competition. He received as a result of that a scholarship to attend a summer art program at UT. And Violet Stone, she advances to the state art competition in visual arts scholastic, in the visual arts scholastic event or VAE. She also received the gold seal recipient. That's from all students who participated in this, that's 1/8 for 6/8 school, so quite an accomplishment. Lago Vista High School golfer Braden Smith, he is the 18th best golfer in the state of Texas. So congratulations to Braden, Coach Rogers, and the team and parents, of course. And then lastly, Lago Vista ISD Teacher of the Year. So they named their elementary and secondary teacher of the year. This, of course, is a huge accomplishment and a great honor for educators. Kathy Evans is the elementary teacher of the year. And Caitlin Witten is the secondary teacher of the year. And they, of course, will represent Lago Vista ISD at the state version or state level for teacher of the year. So congratulations to all. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Anybody else on council?
Mayor, if I may, this is Meredith.
Yes.
I have received information from our Parks and Rec Department that the city pool will open Saturday, May 29. The hours for the summer season, the pool is open Tuesdays through Sundays, 1 PM until 7 PM. There will be water aerobics and swim lessons provided through the YMCA. However, they do not yet have any schedules or pricing available yet, but we are hoping that they receive those soon, and as soon as they do, we'll get those posted and sent out to everybody.
All right, just a quick question on that.
Sure.
Any, any reason why 1 PM, what's going on in the morning?
I believe what Chris Mobley told me was that the water aerobics classes would begin at noon and end at 1 PM.
And Mayor, in the past, this swim team did their stuff in, over there.
That's right, this swim team is, takes up the morning hours.
All right, I was thinking that, but I just wanted to make sure. Yes, Counselor Marion?
Yeah, and I actually asked that same question of Mr. Mobley at one of our meetings. And, and what he stated is that that's also so that parents who work have an opportunity to take their children outside of regular business hours. So if they close any earlier than parents who work 8 to 5, or something similar, wouldn't have an opportunity to take advantage of, of the swimming pool.
Right, I just figured there might be some of us that like to swim between 7 AM and noon.
Mr. Mobley did, and I'm right there with you, Mayor. Mr. Mobley did state that Tassara has the pool there, and there's a sort of contract or some sort of thing that they allow the residents to swim in their pool. Erin could speak more to that, perhaps, or Chris Mobley could at a later date, but I think that's the alternative for morning swims.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll get clarification on that. Thank you. Anybody else have any items of community interest? All right.
The Green Center will be open in June. It'll be our first time back, normal operations. The Green Center is open every first Thursday and first Saturday of the month, so.
June 3rd, June 5th.
That's correct, so bring what you need to bring. We're entering fire season, so good to get rid of it.
All right, thank you. Okay, we shall move into our presentation, item number three, and this is the Cox Springs School, the historic Cox Springs School Restoration. And we have with us tonight Ms. Sheila Nichols. Ms. Nichols, you have the floor.
You're muted.
You're muted, we can't hear you.
Okay, I'm muted. I think I lost my president because he had to leave. Thank you very much for letting us make this presentation. We just wanted to let you all be aware of the school that started in Lago Vista in 1895, 1900, that it's on Old Burnett Road now, in very, very bad shape, and we're in the process of trying to raise money to restore it. I think the mayor gave you all a brochure that tells you, right, tells you all about the history, and it used to be on Lomans Ford Crossing Road and Ledge Acres years ago, and they had to move it because of the dam was built, and that area flooded. So J.J. Colton, who owned so much of the land around here, he paid $100 to have the school moved over to where it is presently on Old Burnett Road. So a group of us have joined together, and we're trying to put it into three phases of restoring. The first is to make it stable, because it definitely isn't, and then we'll try and do the exterior and then the interior. And the object and the goal is to finally get to the point where we can use it for the elementary schools in Lago or the middle school, to come and see what school was like back over 100 years ago. We've been working with Nameless School, that's on Nameless Road. They've already donated an old stove that was used to heat the building, but we've learned so much about the history of the school, and we know some of the people that went to school there. And eventually, we want to contact LASD and send the information out through them with pictures to see if they know of any grandparents who are still alive that went to school there. And our goal in collecting the money is to have different sponsors, and we have a GoFundMe, a Facebook page, a website page. We also will be making different donation levels, and we'll have your names put on bricks for a certain level, and those bricks will be on the path to the well that we're going to try and restore that is still in the same spot that it was in 1920. So we just wanted to make you all aware that this is a kind of a combined effort between Jonestown and Lago to try and save this old school, and we were just hoping we could get a little support from your council. And I appreciate you listening to me, and just look at the information and try and pass it around to as many people as possible. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Yes, this is a, a very nice undertaking, very impressive. Yeah, thank you for bringing this to our attention, and I will put this on the agenda for future consideration.
Do that, yeah, that'd be fine. Okay, thank you very much, good night.
Thank you, have a good night. All right, I have had a request, oh, I'm sorry, that was a presentation. All right. I have had a request. Oh, I'm sorry. That was a presentation. Had a request. We're going to jump ahead to our discussion items. And number 12, discussions regarding adding first responders to Veterans Memorial Park. Let's see. A request was made to add first responders to the brick pathway in the Veterans Memorial Park. I don't really have any background on this. It was just a request. I don't really have any information, so it's just for discussion, everybody's thoughts. Personally, I, I like the idea of recognizing, you know, first responders. But I'm just wondering if this is the place to do it because it is a veterans, veterans park. So. Anyway, I just want to hear what y'all thought about it.
Yeah, Mayor, I ran this by my focus group that, you know, like contact ahead of council sessions. And, and it was actually pretty strong feedback and unanimous that while we have great respect for first responders, keeping the Veterans Memorial Park as a Veterans Memorial Park and maybe thinking about something else for first responders was a, was a preferred idea rather than melding the two together because it's really two very different things.
And I thought they're real close. Police Department is right down the street. Maybe we could come up with something where we can recognize first responders, you know, in the pathway or on the wall or something there at the police station. So. Anybody else?
Yeah, I would just back up what Paul said. Talking with a member of veterans in our community, excuse me, in our community. I pretty much get the same response. All, we're in favor of some type of structure or something to appreciate our first responders, did not feel that the veterans park was the right place.
Anybody else on this end?
I, Ms. Council.
Yeah, I'd like to, to weigh in a little bit. I can appreciate the fact that people want to honor our first responders. But I think in the spirit of veterans, that the veterans park should remain strictly a veterans park so that we can honor the people that have served in our military. One of the things that I think needs to be discussed and not discussed, but heard is that we have some very fine people whose bricks outline what they have contributed to, to our, our city and our, and our country. One of the people that lives in Lago Vista that, that has a brick there is a fellow named Tommy N. Thompson. He was a recipient of the Distinguished Flying Cross and an Air Force pilot during the Vietnam War. His brick is on Veterans Walk. And we honor Tommy for his bravery and fortitude in surviving his plane being shot down, being captured by the Vietcong. He was detained in a Vietnamese prisoner war camp from which he escaped. He was later recaptured and returned back to the POW camp. But his story doesn't end there. Tommy later escaped and made his way back home. So I've been honored to have met him and was moved by his inspiring story. I don't think a lot of people here in Lago Vista know that story, so I'd share that with you. There are many other people who also have either relatives or friends whose, whose names are on Veterans Walk. And I think that's a safe place for, for that reminder. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Marion.
Mayor, I, I really just wanted to, you know, piggyback on what both, actually what all three councils have stated so far. I think it's a really nice idea to, you know, set up some sort of a memorial or, or an homage to our first responders. I certainly think that they deserve it. But I do believe that we need to leave Veterans Memorial Park for veterans. Some have a whole lot of background knowledge on this, but from what I do understand, I think there was some fundraising done from citizens to help pay for that park. I actually see a gentleman that I understand was instrumental in getting that all together, Mr. Bond, here. Maybe he's going to be speaking for that. I'm not sure. But just wanted to reiterate how important that it is that I think we keep the veterans park separate from the first responders, you know, memorial. My husband, being a veteran, he feels very strongly about that.
All right. Thank you. All right. Is there anybody in the audience who? I see your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor, for recognizing me. As a veteran corpsman during Vietnam here, that I also, just one more voice other than the council members to reiterate the uniqueness of the veterans memorials across our country. And they are all uniquely for veterans. And it's important that, that, that uniqueness remain, I believe. It's, it's incredibly important and very cool to honor our first responders. And I agree, that, that little, that swath of green in front of the police department would, would be, if it wasn't prohibited on the basis of something else, would be a great place to, and very visual, to see a memorial for our first responders and appropriately locate it as well. So I appreciate you hearing my input.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Bond.
Mayor. Members of the council, I hope you, you get my email sometime this week. But I went ahead and did a little history. And the first time that the city had a park was in 1999 that they dedicated as Veterans Park. And then in 2016 with Resolution 16638, we formed a committee to do a presentation on how we can rebuild the park. The first responders, there are two locations. You mentioned the police department area. But we did not mention the fire departments, which they have two new buildings. And if, if some youngster was walking in the area and they saw the bricks there, they might get a little excited. They might join the EST forum. But we have to be careful in the fact that you have a document that was given to you on December 7th, 2017. It's an 18-page document on Veterans Park. I hope you get a chance to read that. Because if anything was done to take away from the veterans, you'd have to remove flags, emblems, granite, add stones, and ignore what's in the comprehensive plan, which was used to help formulate this. So anyway, I don't think the city wants to get into a Pandora's box where if they would open the door to first responders, due respect for them. But who else is there? Who else is there? So please think deeply about it. Because we spent the money. We had a lot of donations. At the end of it, we gave back to the city $14,000 of overage on brick sales. So it was a nice, smooth, comfortable feeling that we got there. And with over 300 people attending the 2017 dedication, that was a sight to behold. Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I, I share the sentiments of the council on this in that. But the only thing I hadn't heard that might need to be considered is similar to what Mr. Bond just pointed out. And it's that money was raised and allocated for a specific purpose. And if you repurpose that product, then you might have legal issues with how the money was, the, the city ordinance and the money raised and how it was spent, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? All right. I, I, I'm glad that, I'm glad to hear that everybody kind of shared the same sentiments that I thought, you know, I, I was pretty confident this is the way everybody would feel. But the request had come to me, so I put it on the agenda for discussion. And I think council pretty clear where we stand. And I don't believe we'll be seeing this on the agenda, but we will be looking, we will take into consideration something else, you know, in the future for possibly recognizing first responders. And we will move on. We will go back in our agenda now to report an update. This is item number four, update to previous budget amendment for the Aviation Department to purchase an ATV for airport use. The item before you is just an update on a previous budget amendment approved by council on the April 1st agenda to purchase an ATV for the Aviation Department. The amendment before you at the time included photos of the vehicle requested and an estimated cost of $5,847. When our Parks and Recreation Director, Chris Mobley, contacted the company to lock in the purchase, he was told that the price had increased to $6,848 and a penny. He reassessed ATVs that were available and found another vehicle comparable in all areas to the one he had originally wanted to purchase. It is a Quad Boss UTV Full Cab Polaris Model 3210 and has an estimated cost of $4,795.14, which winds up being a bit of a savings over the original amount requested. This item requires no action from council. This is an administrative business item to make sure that council is aware of the reason for the change in items purchased versus the item called out specifically in the previous budget amendment and to create a clear audit trail for the auditors. Questions, comments?
Sounds good.
Save just $1,000.
Yeah. Anybody from the audience have any questions, comments on that report? All right. We will go to action items. Number five, discussion, consideration, and possible action on the construction contract award for the 2021 street drainage improvement projects and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. So I know over the last couple of months, the only street on anybody's mind has been Lowman Ford Road, except for maybe Shoreline Ranch, has three potholes in it. But mostly it's been Lowman Ford Road. However, we do have a whole street project plan out there. It has other roads that are scheduled to be improved this year. And along with that, those street improvements, we also have to do drainage improvements on the sides of the road. So the city recently had the bid opening May 11th, 2021, at 11:00 AM for the 2021 Street Drainage Improvements Project. The proposed improvements up for bid consist of carving drainage ditches along 44 roadways scheduled for paving, some of them major roads as listed in the attached tabulated bids. Overall, approximately 31,000 feet of drainage ditched were bid as part of the base bid and over 22,000 feet as part of an added bid alternate. Drainage improvements must happen before a roadway can be rehabbed. Although the winter storm has changed what type of pavement will be used for these streets, the need for these planned drainage improvements has not changed and only impacts paving scheduling. Because these drainage improvements must be implemented prior to the paving of these streets, a phase approach is included in the contract documents, which would allow some paving while drainage improvements may still be occurring. I'm assuming at different parts of the town, not at the same street at the same time. Iron T Construction offered the best value to the city at $387,000. The contractor has 120 days to complete the work. Thus, likely completion will be in August of 2021. The review of the tabulated bids indicates that lower bidder used bid mounts that were both appropriate and competitive for the project. Six bids were received and the other bids are detailed in the attached tabulated bid sheet. The project was estimated at $430,000. The cost for the project was included in the street rehab estimates for year 2021. The city has available funding of approximately 1.83 million dedicated to cover this project and the paving of the 44 streets. City staff determined that this construction company has constructed many similar projects around the North Texas area. Several cities attested to their qualifications. Council may elect to take staff's recommendation, reject all bids, or proceed with further evaluation for a different award. Staff recommends the contract for the 2021 street drainage improvements be awarded to Iron T Construction for the base bid and including the added bid alternate. And council authorized the city mayor to execute the contract. Questions, comments from council? Yes, sir. Counselor Prince.
So several questions, and I'm, I'm just trying, I suspect these are going to be questions for Mr. Blay. I want to understand the budget aspect here. So the, the original capital plan had 2.8 million, I think it was 2.85 million, actually, for street improvements. And, and what I understand, what I'm hearing is that just under 1.9 million remains available out of that. And so presumably, all of that money will be spent to repair roads this year. As you may recall, when we discussed the added expanse around Lowman, there was, for me, anyway, there was a surprise that no work on other streets had been done so far out of that $2.8 million plan. And we requested Mr. Blay come back and say what can be done, assuming that he can spend the money that had previously been allocated. And so I'm a little bit confused now because the, the list that's in front of us here includes overlay and micro surfing and fog seal. But I seem to remember that Mr. Blay suggested the fog seal probably would be zeroed out this year in order to fund the overage on Lowman's Ford. So if the fog seal, question number one then would be, if that's correct, then the fog seal streets are not going to be done this year. Do we need to do the drainage work for the fog seal roads now? Or should we also put that off? That's question number one. And then question number two, and this goes back to Mr. John Yopin's statement. I'm, I'm looking at the online version of the street plan and Shoreline Ranch shows up as being on the plan for 2021, but it's not on the sheet in front of us today. And, and so I, I don't know if the online version of the street plan is, is up to date or needs to be updated. And if there's anything else in the street plan online that's been removed or shifted out. And I, I guess really the question is, is, is this list in front of us today the current and accurate plan for, for the current fiscal year? And, and if so, you know, are all these fog seal streets going to be done or not?
All right. Mr. Blay, would you like to address that?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Good evening. Very good questions by council member. Prince, of course, leave it up to Paul to catch issues. Fantastic. I am looking on the, on your last request first, which is Shoreline. And if you just. It is possible there was a mistake done, made. it is possible there was a mistake done, made.
And, and that's fine, Eric, if, if, if the online version is substantially accurate still, has not been substantially changed and this is just one that got missed, that, that's fine, you can, you can work that offline and fix that. I, I'm actually more interested than the first part of the question. You know, are these fog seal streets going to be done within the $2.8 million or not, given the overspend on Lowman? And, and if they're not going to be done, should we also delay the drainage work associated with that list of streets?
Right. So, yes and no, I'll go back to the shoreline real quick before I answer that. So it looks like there might have been a mistake on shoreline. What you have online that hasn't changed at all, so it looks like there was an oversight on our part for that project. So on this one, we, we were not completely done with analysis of the roadways. So far, we've already determined that the first 11 streets, we intend to complete those by the end of this summer. So those are Bison Sierra Trail and all the rest of them, so there's 11 street. The last, and I will go and I'll go to the microsurfing in a little bit. The last streets, which are streets number 30, the last, the last 15 streets, we are fairly certain we will not get to them this fiscal year. So those are all the fog seal paving jobs. The streets in between, which are microsurfing, and those are about 20 streets. We are not sure yet whether we're going to be able to get to them this year or not. And so, but one thing to keep in mind is we propose, we made this such that we added the fog seal as an added bid alternate because we're fairly certain we're not going to get to it this year, but we are going to get to it next year, so we can, usually the bigger the contract amount is and the, usually the smaller the unit price gets on some of these projects. So we wanted to include that knowing that we're going to get to it in the next year or two eventually. So we wanted to include that as an option for council to award it or not. So with that minimum, we definitely recommend awarding the first, the base bid. And the added bid alternative price is a concern, then obviously council doesn't have to include that. Not sure if I did answer that or not.
If I can follow up on that, and then Mr. Williams has a question, I think. What I'm hearing you saying is that the, the, the streets on Fog Seal will be done eventually, maybe not this fiscal year. And so kind of two follow-up questions and i- is there kind of a time limit on doing the drainage before you do the roadwork? Is, is it okay to do the drainage work early and then wait at, you know, six months or 12 months to do the, the street? That's, that's one question. Then the second piece would be, should we consider using this $125,000 that's in the added bid alternate here in front of us? Should we consider doing that so that the, you know, you have a better shot at getting more of the microsurfing work done? Because I assume the sense of urgency goes up, right? Overlay streets would be the highest urgency, then microsurfing the second and then fog seals more of a prevention from.
So on the microsurfing, there's a very good chance and there's, I'm fairly certain we're not going to be able to do any microsurfing this year, but what's happened is that many of those streets are no longer valid for microsurfing. And therefore, we plan on including those on overlays. We know a few of them, we haven't been able to analyze all of them at this point.
So.
So Eric, are you saying you're, you're just trying to lock in this amount of money and some of it's going to be carried over to the following year after this, or?
Right, I'm trying to get the drainage done, so I don't have to go out for a bid again next year and waste the two months of work on beating this out when we can spend the time doing something else. And the, the thing with drainage is you need to do the drainage before you pave it, preferably not four years before you pave it, but soon, within reasonable amount of time, you know, a year is reasonable. But you definitely do not want to do it afterwards.
So are you saying that you're going to do Lowman Ford and you're going to do about 22, 22 to 25 streets? And you're going to do the drainage plan on those 22 to 25 streets and that all the other monies just carry over? Or are you talking about doing other streets and just letting the drainage be done way ahead of time? I'm not getting the point here.
So the way, the way I understand it, the drainage, if we took the alternate as well, we would do the drainage.
On all these streets?
On all 44 of the streets, okay? As far as the paving, definitely the first 11. And then, and then if time allows, you know, he, he, the microsurfing, well, he's got to go back and reevaluate some of these streets. But he, he may be able to get to some of the microsurfing streets or overlays. But I don't know the exact number, I don't know that 22 would actually get repaved or not. It just depends on the timing, that's the way I understand it. But anything else that, you know, of the 44 streets that we don't get to, they, they will be moved into the street rehab plan for the next fiscal year, you know? Council Marion.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I actually have a few questions, but mine are excuse me, more related to the, uh, the bid itself. When I was looking at the numbers, I was a bit surprised that the next closest bid, when you include both things that were bid out, was 64,000 more. And it went all the way up to 379,000 more, so double basically what, um, what IRT did for. And so that just raises some red flags for me in wondering if we're going to get what we pay for. So I, I understand from what I've heard so far anyway, that IRT has not done work for the city before. We are taking the word of what work they may have done in other cities, but I just wanted to kind of note that I have a little bit of concern that they are so far below most of the other bids that were received. And will there be anything that could be put perhaps in the contract that will detail quality control measures or things like that, just in case their, their work isn't all that it's cracked up to be? That's question number one. And then my other question is, how long is this work expected to last? Like, when would we be expected to see another bid for similar work come before us? Those are the two questions I have for now.
So clarification on your second question, are you talking about on the exact same streets?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So I'll let Eric answer that. Look into the list and Eric can correct me if I'm wrong. I'm not sure that we've had any of the six to work in City of Lago Vista, but Eric can correct me on that. So Eric, if you don't mind, would you address the quality control issues?
Absolutely, Mayor. I have, I have experience with two of these contractors. Myers Concrete Construction and Diamond X Contracting, so I know those two contractors. The Coats and Construction is a local home builder and the CLC Unlimited and Dig Doug, it's the first time I heard of them. Also, IRT, I've never heard of IRT Construction, so that is very legitimate concern and we had the same concern when we first saw this IRT Construction with such a low bid. We did contact all the, a lot, not all, but a lot of public works directors and city engineers who had worked with them before and we, we, we received a lot of very good feedback, so that was pleasantly, we were pleasantly surprised on that. And what we found out is this contractor specializes in drainage and specifically drainage ways, just like this one. And when we talked to IRT Construction and we tried to confirm their costs, what we found out was that they have a couple of big jobs here in San Antonio. And they are going to do, they're going to work on the City of Lago Vista is in between those two jobs and the low price helps them stay, stay in this area and reduce a lot of their costs to, for other jobs, so that, that reflected on the price, so that made a lot of sense. So we felt a lot more comfortable after we did our research on, on, on these guys. And yes, there are a lot of caveats in the contract, it's a 400-page contract. So there's a lot of caveats, there's a performance bond that the city has and there's a payment bond and obviously insurance. So there's a lot of factors that play in there to make sure that we get, we get what we pay for. As in regards to timing, so we just made this to be completed in August. I didn't quite understand the question on the roadways, if you're asking about the roadways, how long these roadways typically last? It really depends, some roadways will last maybe five years before we start doing some sort of maintenance of them, such as crack sealing and maybe a fog seal or some thing called overlay. Some other roadways may last a lot more than that. But drainage is, is a very major factor and nearby construction, we found also nearby construction is, can be very detrimental.
So Eric, the question was more the lifespan of the actual drainage work. So this drainage work, we get it done this year, what, how, how long does this tip, do these ditches typically last before we have to go and dig them out again? Or is this something that was done only when the streets are rehabbed?
Yes, typically this are done only when the streets are rehabbed. The last ditches lasted since the 70s, but there wasn't much going on in the city since then. So that's a plus, since we have so much development going on, that's going to be, like I said, a major factor on the ditches and the roadway on how long they last and I would be erroneous to try to give a date or number on that one.
All right, thank you very much. Council Prince?
I want to go back and kind of clarify on the overall plan because it felt like a little fuzzy at the end of what we, what we discussed. So here's what I think I heard you say, Eric, and you can correct it if I, if I get this wrong. You are recommending that we just go ahead and do this drainage work on the complete list in front of us today, which is 44, 46 streets, something like that. You are saying that you expect to get all of the, the roadwork done on the overlay section this year, by the end of the summer is what I heard you say. You're expecting to get none of the roadwork done this fiscal year on the fog seal section of what we're looking at today. You're expecting to get some portion, but you don't know how much of the microsurfing section to be done this year. And some of those may become overlay projects rather than microsurfing. So that's what I think I heard you say. And, and I'll ask you to, you know, clarify or, or correct if I got anything wrong there. And then I have a follow-up question, but please respond to that.
Yeah, that you, you got, you got that one correct.
Okay, great, thank you. And then my question would be, what's the limit for this year? Is it time or is it money? So when you, when you say, you know, here's what I can't, when you finally figure out the final plan, are you expecting that you will run out of money at 2.8 million? Or you'll run out of time and spend less than 2.8 million?
Money is not the issue, time and timing is the issue. I mentioned that the last meeting that we had is there's certain type of work, certain type of prep work that gets done in wintertime to prepare for certain type of paving that gets done typically in spring and summer. So because we haven't had a lot of time to do that prep work, we won't be able to get to some of the streets. So it's more of the timing and possibly time, but more of a timing issue.
Okay, and so Mayor, I guess, you know, we've asked for this to come on the agenda as soon as Mr. Blay is ready to detail what the plan is, so we know what he's going to spend and what streets are going to get done.
Council Marion.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I had one additional follow-up question. And it's about the actual executive summary page, well, the second page of it, where, where it asks if there's funding required, it's marked yes, if yes, is bud, is it budgeted? And both yes and no are Xed off, and I was just wondering if that's an error? Or if it's not an error, what isn't budgeted? And if it isn't budgeted, where is that coming from? Like, how much and from where?
So it should be all budgeted in our CIP fund, but, and I'm assuming that's just an error for both of them being corrected, Xed out, but.
That's kind of what I was thinking, thank you.
Eric, just. Anything different there, Eric?
Well, the, the, for this project is definitely budgeted, but because we had an increase on that, there's, there's a slight uncertainty of what may happen possibly next month, once we come up with, with the street plan. And I, I don't, I, I don't want to say it's budgeted fully and I'm 100% confident that we'll be able to cover it. There's a very slight concern that because we spend an extra $500,000 or so moment and possibly spend some, some money on the micro that's going to cost more. That we may get close to that limit. But that's why we put yes and no, but it's mostly fairly sure that, mostly sure that we should start a budget concern.
Okay, but that'll be, that'll be clarified more next month when you bring, bring back the street list. I think Chalene has a follow-up. Do you have a follow-up?
Yes, actually in response to what Mr. Blay just said. So if money happens to run out for this project, then to your point there, we would know a little bit more next month. But I'm assuming then that would need to come back to council for council to consider whether or not we would want to set aside additional funds and what that would look like as far as how much and from where, is that right?
Yes, yes, definitely.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, Mayor Famine.
Councilwoman.
Mr. Blay, have you considered this possibility? Since you've already said that we're not going to do the fog seal, how about if we also don't do the drainage on the, the streets that are going to be fog sealed? I'm curious about what that price might be. If we just focused on the streets that are going to require the overlay and the possible microsurfing? And just do the, just do the drainage on those. I think from a standpoint of time and, and money, that might be a scenario that's worth looking at. You agree?
So, well, then, just so I can clarify for you. The original bid was for the first two sections. The 31,000 feet of drainage. They added the 22,000 feet as an alternate. Okay, so the total price that you're looking at is for both the base bid and the alternate. So if you just did the base bid, that would be looking at the 261,000. In, in it. In the, so you'd be taking out the 100, just under 126,000 for Iron T. Okay. So, and we have that option. You know, it's, it's up to us if we want to forego the alternate and save that 126,000, we can do that. The concern that Eric had expressed earlier when Paul had asked the same question was that if, if he doesn't get the alternate now, when he gets ready to do drainage again, he's going to have to come back for council. He's going to have to put it out for bids and go through this whole process again, and it was like a 60-day process and stuff. And his request, recommendations that we approve the entire thing and get it on the book, get it scheduled, and then that saves him two months' worth of time down the road.
I, I understand that, but the, the point that I would make is when you remove the, the portion, this, this alternate bid, if we remove that entirely, all those streets are probably going to have to be addressed at some point later. So why be concerned with the, the drainage for, for those at all? So why, why consider this, this alternate at all? So why why consider this this alternate at all? That's my question. I mean, yes, we're going to probably have to add, we're going to have to take this on and some more later on. You know, we could do all of that at a later time. I just believe that the the more straightforward we approach, we take, the better off it will be.
All right. Yeah, that's just some way that the council have to decide, you know, it's on us to decide. Make a head decisions. Yes.
Councilwoman. I thank you, Mayor. And I think what he said was if they go ahead and do the fog seal ditching work now, he anticipates doing the fog seal work next year. So that's why he figured we'd go ahead and get it done. My real question though is I want to come back to follow up what Mr. Prince was talking about and then Mr. Blaze's response. I don't know if I completely understood it. So my understanding is is that if we do both sections, it's 387,000 approximately, and we budgeted 430, and yet still Mr. Blake came back and said yes, no on the budget. He wasn't sure. We'll know more in about a month when we know more about Lomond. So my I'm guessing what he means is is that we'll know the final overage on Lomond and he'll know what he has to take away. He's I think I believe he's already made the decision. He's going to take away the fog seal work and there's a certain amount of money that was already budgeted for that. But what he doesn't know is, and this is kind of a question of my part, is it is the overage on Lomond going to be so much that he might have to dig into some of this ditching money in order to cover Lomond? Is that the reason why he did the yes, no?
No, I think it's more on overlay of the instead of doing the micro surfacing, he's talking about doing overlays. Overlays on these, some of these streets is going to be more money.
Well, but I understand that, but he'll just make the decision not to do those. I'm assuming versus going over or digging into the ditching budget.
Correct. I don't know. The way I understood it was he, once you take out the funding for Lomond, you had the 1.83 left.
Right.
Okay, so you spend 387 on the ditching, which gives you 1.45 roughly. That's what he's going to use for the 11 streets and any of the additional streets under the micro surfacing that he can get to.
Right.
But when he when he finalizes his list, it might come out more than the 1.45 that he has remaining. And so then he would be coming back to council to to ask for additional funding. I can pretty much tell you right now, there is no additional funding out there.
Right.
So when he does his streets, Eric, it will be under what money you have available. So.
But I think the point I'm trying to make is is that what he's asked for and money for this particular project is under what he budgeted. And we're going to allocate that right now. And so if he comes back later and says that, you know, he needs some, he's not going to be digging into this. This is budgeted. It's in the I don't think there's any yes, no, is what I'm trying to get at with this. This is a yes. It's budgeted. It is going to be less than what we budgeted. And if he needs to take money from somewhere, it ain't going to be here, you know, because this will have already been executed and it will be done against the budget that was already set.
Right. And it'll be in and yeah, once it's authorized, Star will go ahead and move it to its own account.
And so if he does need it in money, it's like he'll have to take roads off his list of what he's going to do this year. That's literally what he's going to have to do is my way I would understand.
If he if he budgets is more, if he plans more streets than what he has money for, you'll have to make cuts somewhere.
Yeah, okay, okay.
And the other thing is that we've seen with so many things where when you have to come back and do it later, it ends up costing you a heck of a lot more than what it was going to cost if you did it like now.
These other bids might be more reflective of what we pay in the future. We don't do this now.
We don't do this now. And that's like you said, they're doing this as a project in between two other bigger projects. So they're probably being much more reasonable what they're charging us for this additional project than what it would be if we had to bring them in with all of their equipment and supplies and do their setup and pay for all of that. So this is probably saving us quite a bit of money.
Yeah, that is one of the that's one of the things a lot of people don't realize on these jobs is your startup cost. I don't those of y'all who were around in 2014, 2015, when our water intake system and water treatment plant number three got shut down, we had a construction company that basically had massive equipment on site. And for a year, we were having to pay them, Kevin, you might can remember, what was it about 20,000 a month?
It was, yeah.
Just to store their equipment because we didn't know when we were going to start operations again. And for them to pull their stuff off and then bring it back would have cost us, you know, million.
I think that was a big part of the overage on that contract was that unexpected expense.
Right. So one of the things we got to take into consideration is the startup cost. And if they're doing this in between jobs and can save on startup costs, that's great. And then as Council Weatherly mentioned, bulk gets you a lower unit price. So it may cost us more if we break it up into smaller pieces. Yes, Council.
I want to remind everybody that 15 minutes ago, I asked Mr. Belay if he was going to run out of time or run out of money. And he said he's going to run out of time or the appropriate time to do the jobs. So I think frankly, based on what he said earlier, this worrying about running out of money is 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 not an issue. And so, you know, let's let's get as much as we can done in the streets. And I'm 100% in favor of doing the the full work here because we're going to have the money based on what we've heard in the last 30 minutes. And and there's an efficiency. Okay.
All right, anybody else? All right, we will go to the audience. Diane, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things, one of which was just brought up, but I'm going to go ahead and mention it just to reinforce because I wrote it down at the beginning. And but my my first question is, the reference was 120 days to complete the contract. In the the 400 page contract, to complete the work in the 400 page contract, are there ramifications if that timeline line isn't met? Which since we I wrote that question, we subsequently learned that there it's being our job is being buffered by two in San Antonio. I imagine that timeline is just as important to them as it is to us. But my my question still remains. My other my other point, and it's it just recently was brought up as well, is that the aspect of piecemealing parts of this is to me is cutting off our nose to spite our face because of exactly what has been brought up that this the drainage and the ditching is significant parts of the the infrastructure improvement in and of itself and stands if it's done well and buffered properly, it stands for at least four years to finish the resurfacing and so on. And if we if we put off, if we break it apart, then just like you guys said, it's going to it's going to come back costing us at a minimum a third more, not to mention a front end loading additional cost. And just incredibly logistically unwise in my mind. So but everybody seems to be on that same page there. So.
All right. Thank you. Eric.
Input on the 120 days.
I'm sorry.
I was just going back, appreciate the input on the 120 days and ramifications thereof.
Eric, if you don't mind, just give us a kind of an example of what what happens when somebody runs over their 120 days. What are the penalties?
Typically, that's in the contract documents, depends on the contract amount is are at least for this price of under $400,000 is $240 per calendar day of being late. So and it usually gets they usually gets established way before the deadline. So that depends on the progress of the of the job. So if you look at a it's 120 days. If you go two months into it, you're expecting the contractor to be at least 50% done.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience have any comments? All right, I'll bring it back to council and I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the bid of 387,000 with Iron T Construction for the ditching work. And authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
All right, I have the motion by Council Weatherly and my second was by Council Williams. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, the contract is awarded to Iron T unanimous. And we go to number seven. Nope, I'm sorry. Or six. Discussion, consideration and possible action regarding the library city hall expansion project. The city, all you all the council members are aware of this, the city is in critical need of adequate office space. And the growth of the city dictates the need for adding staff members. The poor condition of our existing building also continues to create extraordinary expenses and poor working conditions for the staff that would not be required if an appropriate and extensive renovation were to be undertaken. The renovation could not be completed while the building is occupied, although it might be possible for it to remain partially occupied. However, even that will create challenges and some cost inefficiency due to the need for temporary provisions. As a result, staff is requesting that the council appoint a subcommittee to work with us to generate and then evaluate and compare a range of alternative solutions to the long term need for city facilities. Those solutions should account for the anticipated growth of the city, the staff and the convenience of our residents. Staff also recommends that construction documents be completed regardless of whether there is an intent to ever bid the project. All right, so we're discussing the formation of the subcommittee. Because this building is falling apart around us. We have televisions that turn on by themselves and and freak out staff.
Air conditioning.
We have air conditionings that, well, two weeks ago was making some horrible banging noise. I guess yesterday it went haywire and and turned the city hall into a meat locker. As some of y'all can hear on your audio, we have a constant thumping that we have yet to identify. Don't know what that's coming from. We don't know if the rain got water into our system. Anyway, this building is falling apart. And so we're looking at options. And so we're looking at forming a subcommittee. So questions for y'all or thoughts on the subcommittee? And then if it is something we want to do, who wants to be on it? We can put three people on. So yes, Council Williams.
I think the subcommittee is a great idea. I'd like to be on it.
All right, let me see. I'll have to draw names over here. I know Tanner.
I'll take my hand down and.
I count Williams. Got Davila. Francis. All right, I got three.
I was going to stick my hand up, but I'll stand down for Paul. Okay.
I'm also assuming that, you know, like the staff would be like Sandra, Star and Roy and all those types.
Probably Eric.
And Eric. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that we can get a clear understanding of the situation.
I wonder, and Mr. Williams, I'm especially interested in your feedback on this, if if we might pick a couple of people off of the economic development committee to help us just generate ideas or, you know, some other citizens. But that's the committee that comes to mind as sort of a sweet spot of strong people.
That's fine. I mean, because I mean, economic development should be involved in some kind of way. So.
Just good. Good to get some outside ideas.
But instead of people that are on that committee, having the economic development director be a part of it.
Yeah, you know.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
Well, and you can think about this too, maybe one from economic development. But how about one from our building and standards committee? Because if we're going to end up building something.
Right.
You know, if you're somebody from zoning, we wanted to, we wanted to look nice. As nice as we can afford it.
Well, one of the things that we did when we were doing the comprehensive plan, we had one person from we had from city manager to the developmental services, public works. And then we had one representative from building and standards. And then one representative from planning and zoning. And then we had the three council people. So it really worked out well because it covered all the different areas. Again, we, you know, we got plenty of feedback from economic development, but it would have been nice to have an economic development person on it as well. Spend a lot of time getting information from them to make sure they were covered. But that worked out well. So.
All right. So who you who you're looking at as far as, I got EDC, PSC, who else?
Planning and zoning. Planning and zoning, building and standards. And economic development.
Economic development, standards, planning.
Yeah.
And then as far as scope, I would suggest that we explicitly consider both a long term solution and an interim solution. Because we can't wait, the city staff can't wait until we get to the long term with no easing up. We need to consider both of those.
Correct. And what those options look like and what those options cost. So we'll figure all that out.
All right, Council Marion.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, just wanted to throw it out there. Again, I've suggested before that maybe an interim staff and perhaps even, you know, semi long term for some staff might be putting together some sort of a telework plan where staff who are considered non essential as far as, you know, must be in the building essential can be provided with the opportunity to work from home either all week or a number of days per week. So that maybe that could save on some space at at city hall. That might be something to consider for short term especially.
Yep. We'll add that to their scope. Sounds good. Anybody else? All right. Did anybody think it was bad?
May I ask a question? Sorry. This is Jan Steele.
Yes, Jan.
Yes, I have a question. The committee that you're talking about now, will that be just considering the city hall or will the library be considered in this? I ask that just because anything that involves the library I would like to be part of. And if that's later down the road.
Right. No, this would be just for city hall staff.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anybody from the audience have any comments? All right, I'll bring it back to council and I'll entertain a motion. I have just for clarification in your motion, I have Council Williams, Council Davila, Council Prince and one member each from each of the three committees, economic development, building and standards.
And then the rest of the. Yeah, yes.
And appropriate city staff.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we form this subcommittee and begin working on looking at city hall expansion options, short term plan and and long term plan.
I'll second that. All right, I have the motion from Council Williams and a second from Council Davila. Any further discussion?
Mayor, can I make a motion to amend that it makes sure it's explicitly includes all the people that you named?
Correct.
Because he didn't say that in his motion.
Okay, yes.
To include Council Williams, Council Davila, Council Prince, a member from EDC, a member from. A member from building standards, member from planning and zoning, and appropriate staff. Alright, accept that amendment. Alright, so, yes.
Mr. Mayor, the only thing I think might be important to add or recognize is that you request that those. Additional three members be appointed at the next regular scheduled meeting of each of those committees.
Alright.
They're gonna self, self.
Okay.
Alright.
Do you have a clarifying question on that?
No, he's saying that we come back with the other names of who's going to represent P and Z, who's going to represent planning and zoning. I mean, buildings or standards.
Oh, okay.
You know, who's gonna represent economic development. Yeah.
Good. Alright, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed nay. Hearing none, subcommittee is formed. And staff, we will go to work. Trying to find you a bigger closet. Oh, let's see. Number seven, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding council direction regarding drafting of city council meetings. Minutes, minutes, that's the word. Alright, as y'all know, we discussed this once before, but for some reason failed to bring it back for any kind of. Council minutes currently list a brief summary of citizen comments, but do not include a summary of council member comments. The minutes are not supposed to be a complete summary of what happens at a meeting, but instead a record of the issue at hand. And the resolution reached for that issue. Previous council made the decision to capture comments made by citizens in the meetings while choosing not to capture any comments made by council. Given our current ability to capture the entire meeting on video and the ease and ability for citizens and others to replay the meeting. The question arises if we need to be capturing citizen comments in the written minutes. If such comment should be, should continue to be deemed necessary, shouldn't council comments be captured as well or consistency? My opinion. I don't think we need to capture the council member comments.
I agree.
I mean, the citizen comments, as I was, the citizen comments. I think just the. The minutes, you know, that capture. Relevant parts is all that we need.
First on that?
Yeah.
The issue and the resolution, oh.
Right.
Yeah, correct.
I agree with that.
Council Marion, dots.
I see our hand up.
Did you call me, Mayor?
Yes, I, we've ran out of thoughts up here, so I was turning it to you to see if you had any thoughts.
I do, I think the only thing that I would reiterate is the same comment I made the last time that we talked about this in that. Just making sure that we have a plan in place for all citizens, especially those who might be hearing impaired. It, it, it's one thing to have, you know. Pretty comprehensive minutes, so not, you know, a transcript of, of meetings, of course, but. Because folks who may have some sort of a, of a, a hearing impairment could sure read a few pages of notes, but wouldn't necessarily have access to five or six hours of. Testimony where you can't read everybody's lips and closed captioning has not been. Used or enabled. So if we're not gonna move forward, then it's better a bit more comprehensive, then I might suggesting if go-to meeting has the ability to enable closed captioning.
Alright, yeah, we'll definitely look into that. It's a great, great point. Great point.
Mark it, thank you.
Yes.
I, when we've talked about this before, I had kind of a question slash suggestion, and it really comes back to feedback from the. City staff as to whether it's doable or not, but it, it occurred to me that it might be useful to citizens who are watching the recording of the. City or are particularly interested in something that happened during a council meeting, you know, for example, citizen wants to know what happened on topic number eight. There's no way currently to tell where within the two-hour or five-hour-long video recording topic number eight came out. And, and I'm, I'm wondering since the, the city secretary or, or someone from staff is reviewing the video as they prepare the minutes anyway. Could it be that the minutes could capture the approximate starting point within the video for each agenda item? It seems to me like that would be a, a helpful thing for people who, who, you know, have a particular interest in, you know, only a subset of the agenda item. But I don't know, you know, if that's reasonable from a staff perspective to, to add that in.
Yeah, I don't know, I, since. Since she's listening to it, I, I don't know that it's really. Just a matter of.
Noting the time.
Making a time hack on it. But if that is something that we wanted. To add into, we can make that part of the motion.
Wouldn't that be based on the equipment that's being used? I mean, if, if, if the equipment that's being used have the counter. Like, you know, a cassette player have the counter, so it shows you the time for acting, so I don't know.
Well, that's right, when, when Sandra is reviewing.
You can always see the correct time.
She watches the video or if she listens to the tape.
Yeah, she's right there.
I'm thinking she listens to the tape. I don't know. Sandra. May we get your input on this, on what you think about adding time hacks for each agenda item?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I do review the tape. And so that would be me reviewing a five-hour tape myself to write down the exact mark of where one agenda. Item ends and the next one begins. Which I, I kind of do that when I do my minutes to capture comments and all, and, and that as well, but I fast forward through a lot of stuff too.
So I, I guess the question. I don't know that it would prevent you from fast forward or any, anything, it's just whenever you see me go to a new agenda item, you just make that time hack. But my question would be, if you're listening to it on the tape as opposed to watching the recorded video. Would the timeline. Match up, you know? So, so like for this meeting, when you go to review this meeting, are you listening to the recorded version of the video? Or are you listening to a tape recording?
No, I'm watching the video.
Okay, so the time hacks would, would line up, okay.
Yes, it would be in, it, it goes by minutes and hours, so it would be like one hour and twenty minutes or, you know, something like that. That's what it would show as, as the time.
Alright, so in future meetings. When we bring everybody back to city hall, would you still be using the recorded video? Or would you be going off the tape recording?
Usually use the video, it's just, it's easier to hear through the go-to video or, and the YouTube video.
Okay, good.
Mayor, would you define time hack? Is it another timestamp?
What? Not everybody who's in the military? Yes, timestamp.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Would it be helpful for us as we're, when we're going from one item to another, to just. Look, jot down the times, so if she wants to fast forward, she could fast forward, but if we give her approximate time that we started on a particular item.
And do you want that tasked?
Not a problem. That way I can, I can speed us up when we need to, you know, you know, I'd be more than happy to do that for you. We've been on this fifty-five minutes, let's move on.
Attempt to do that, but I know, I know that I would forget. Not be like on agenda item number ten and look down and go, oh, it might mark the time for the last five agenda items.
Not a problem.
It, it doesn't show the actual time, it just shows the time, you know, like an hour or thirty minutes, it doesn't show the actual time on the clock.
Oh, so it's, it's a relative time. It wouldn't, it wouldn't work that way. Because like if you wrote down eight eleven or eight ten PM for.
I can, I can find it when we ended, when we've stayed on that thirty minutes.
Be honest, I, I think the time lapse is really what we need, because if you're going to watch the video, you want the hours and minutes. Knowing that it's eight o'clock, eight, ten minutes after eight doesn't help you when you go look at the video.
That was good thought though.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Audience, do you have any comments? Yes, Diane.
Golly, I'm having comments this meeting. Yes, thank you for recognizing me. I, my question is that it is, does Mr. Street maybe have a, like when you're recording something, you can put a mark? Like, i- i- you mark a spot on it as you're recording in some AV. I'm, in no way am I expert on any of it, but it seems like I've seen this utilized in other avenues. Where you can put a mark such that when you go back to review it, you can skip, you skip to the, the, to the marks. But that would seem to be something that needs to be done. And. In line, it would during, commensurate with the actual recording, so either the person who's moderating, Mayor Ed Tedwell. Like push a button or whatever the avenue is when you change subjects, or perhaps Mr. Street in, in. In his setup, there's a way to make a, a mark so that you can just skip through. If you know, you know, the, the, the order of events, you can skip through.
We'll have to research that and see. It's possible, I just don't know what go-to. In their settings, their support, I don't know if they have it or not, but if they do, then. Yeah, it should be pretty easy.
Just a thought. Thank you.
Mr. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did I understand you to say that you, I, I believe I understood you to say that. You didn't feel like the citizens' comments should be captured in the minutes, and I think I heard from the microphones of, of the other, of the rest of the council. Support agreement with that. Am I mistaken?
As far as capturing it in the actual minutes, no, you're not mistaken. That is the sentiment, because now we have all the recordings and stuff and. They were being captured previously because we, we weren't doing video.
So, what, the thing that comes to mind where I can see value, I, I think I could appreciate both, both. Where y'all are coming from, but I think where there's value in citizen comments is in public hearings. Where I think of my own experience, for example, in front of council around a year ago, and I spoke out on behalf of. About twenty-six people and the minutes, it, it's important to capture public. Opposition to something before council as much as it is to house, capture their support for that. I think that the, that that's important in the minutes. I think if somebody's looking at acquiring property or they're looking at trying to do something in the city. You know, before you buy or sell anything, you want to go get educated for, first, and the learned individual will want to see, well, what is the public support for this? Is, are they for this or are they against this? Am I gonna have a fight uphill? Or is this something that the city is wanting? And are they willing to embrace it? And if you don't capture that public sentiment in the minutes, they're not gonna sit through and look for that sentiment. They may not. So, anyway, thank you.
Yeah, and that was, that's basically the question, you know, does it need to be captured in written form or is the video form adequate? The video captures not only what they say, but it, you know, expressions as well, so. You know. But, and then the question is if we're gonna capture citizen comments. Do we capture council comments? Because right now, we're not capturing council comments at all, so.
Right, the, the logic, you know, can be applied both to the council as much as it can to citizenry. Certainly, the council's comments and, and their input, they're the ones, they're the legislative body and their input, I think is, is, needs to be captured. But maybe there's a balance to be found in the, on public hearings perhaps. For example, you know, a, just an agenda item, a discussion item, then there may not be a need to capture the public input, but on a public hearing. Well, it's a public hearing, and that's where the citizens have an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant. And. I've seen many an instance where citizens in this town have brought much value to the consideration of pending items. Before the council, so thank you, I believe my three minutes is probably, thank you for, for my time.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thoughts?
Any more comments?
I just wanted to see if anybody had any thoughts on the.
I think there's a difference.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Happened on a public hearing.
So just a couple of quick notes, on go-to meeting, there's not a way to mark the recordings? That, that there's, they don't have that function? There is a function that I'm not sure whether it's part of our subscription or not, where those recordings can be transcribed. It may be an additional service that we'd have to add. But there is that option, so I'll, I'll verify with Dave Street whether or not that's part of our current package or not. But that may be something useful. The Americans with Disabilities Act requires us to provide the ability for those with impairments to. One, participate and two, be able to see what, what has transpired, so. If we had a request from someone who was hearing impaired and needed a transcript, we would be obligated to go through the process to have that done. And if they tell us at the front of the, front end of the meeting beforehand, we would be obligated to provide some service or access to a service, I think it's TTL. That is the proper acronym, so that they could have it trans, translated or transcribed, if you would, kind of by audio in real time. So, we have a legal obligation to do those things. We may have that ability to do the transcription, and I believe it has it in almost real time. But I don't know if that's part of our current go-to package, but as we go back to in-person meetings where it's streamed online. On YouTube, that'll change the circumstances yet again, so that's something to be conscious of.
Okay, because I was gonna ask the question then. Obviously, it would be cost, if it's not part of our script, subscription and we hadn't added, what would the cost be and then? If, but my real question is. If it's, if we have the ability to have it transcribed, can the transcription be, is it, can that legal be accepted as our minutes? I mean, that would be word for word.
There's nothing from a legal standpoint that would prevent y'all from doing that. It would be a great departure from what has traditionally been used for city council meeting minutes. It certainly goes well beyond what's required by the Open Meetings Act. But it's not something that would be prohibited. You can always do more, you just can't do less.
Right. But I just, you know, I, I was just thinking if, that, especially if it's already something part of our package, if. We just have it transcribed and then Sandra doesn't have to listen to five hours of council meetings four times to get the main minutes down. We can just accept that. I mean, that kept, that would capture. Everybody's thoughts, you know, Mr. Roberts' concerns about the importance of citizen comments and. I know it would be a lengthy document to add, be extremely detailed, but. It would be comprehensive. Of course, then we go to YouTube and everything would change. Council Marion.
Mayor, the only follow-up question I would have to bat is. I'm just thinking in my head how that transcription works as far as identifying who says what. I would be interested in seeing what an example of a transcription from go-to meeting might look like. Just because I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how, how that would be differentiated.
Well, hopefully I do a pretty good job of recognizing everybody by name. So it, it should be clear, but you know, I don't say that I always, you know, and you get follow-ups and stuff like that, um, you know. So it wouldn't be a hundred percent, but.
Mr. Mayor, it works based on recognizing your microphone and who's speaking. Um, so you, it really is important that only one person be speaking at a time. That's how it picks up and what name you put in there. So if our, some of our regular members, you know, come in with pseudonyms, um, uh, then that's who would be recognized and you wouldn't know the real name of the person. Um, but that's how it picks it up. The go-to meeting website, uh, gives you a good idea of how, how it would look, um, and how it functions. Um, so if you want to check that out, if, if you have a thought process, but you know, if, if we really are going to trans, uh, transition back to uh, in-person meetings and then do it on YouTube, that could be a pretty costly service that we'd have to, there are services that do it. You can have a service transcribe a YouTube, uh, video. It, it can be very costly, uh, especially given that we tend to have kind of longer meetings. Um, so just something to be, be cognizant of, be aware of. Um, it's really up to y'all and how you want to spend the dollars.
Yeah, it's probably going to be, probably going to be prohibitive. I mean, you know, take me speaking, for instance, right now, it would not show up as Mayor Tidwell. It would show up as City of Laguna Vista. So anybody sitting up here on the dais would, it would show up as City of Laguna Vista, not, so you wouldn't necessarily know which council members. Anyway, it was just a thought, but. Yes, Mr. Roberts.
Just wanted to get, on, on the, on how it would transcribe, if I'm understanding Aaron correctly, if I was using, calling in from my cell phone and forgot that I had Mr. Awesome as my screen name.
Like you did the other night.
Yes, that's going to happen. All right. So, yeah. Thanks.
It would show Mr. Awesome over there. All right, so Mike, Mike, I'm going to go back to see if anybody has any thoughts on the public hearing portion, you know, would we want to say, okay, we're not going to necessarily capture citizen comments or council comments unless it's a public hearing? Thoughts on that?
Well, one, I'm, I'm trying to navigate between placing the burden of too much transcription, but also capturing the spirit of was there significant feedback or not? And I wonder whether, uh, in public hearings, it would be appropriate to ask that, that as the minutes are being prepared, there's a note that might say something like, no public comments were made, or significant comments against this were, were made by a large group of it. Something that's kind of puts it in a vault. It, was there a lot of, a lot of people against it? Was there mixed comments? Was it all in favor or were there no comments? Kind of that level. I wonder if that would be useful. And then to Mr. Roberts' point, if someone was saying, do I want to come do a, you know, uh, open up a fast food restaurant in Laguna Vista, uh, and, and this agenda item number seven, I want to see what the public had to say about it. They can, they can see there were a lot of people opposed to it. Well, then maybe they go listen to the, to the recording. Uh, I'm just trying to think of, you know, something that's hopefully not too much of a burden to capture in the minutes, but that might be meaningful.
Yes, my only comment would be, if, if someone's, you know, that interested in that, um, they're gonna go watch the video. Um, I mean, having the summary would be nice. I don't disagree with that at all. But if you've got an, an interest in a particular topic, you're going to go watch that item. And I think having the timestamps, stamps, and they're making it easy for someone to get to that, to me should accommodate most folks. My.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, I'll bring it back to council. And I will entertain a motion. Yes, Council Sullivan.
Mayor, I would make a motion that we instruct the city secretary to stop recording citizen comments, but add the timestamps to per minutes, uh, and that we also ask staff to investigate transcription and close captioning and maybe bring that information back to us so we can make decisions on that.
All right, I have a motion.
Sounds good.
And I have a second by Council Weatherly. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimous. And we're going to number eight. Discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding an ordinance of the city council of the city of Laguna Vista, Texas, amending chapter one, general provisions, article one dot one zero zero, code of ordinances, section one dot one zero one, to remove reference to Franklin Legal Publishing Incorporated, providing codification and publication, an effective date repealer, severability, proper notice, and open meetings clause. Uh, for many years, the city has you, did use Franklin Legal Publishing Incorporated to compile and publish the city's code of ordinances. To effectuate more expedient uploading of changes to city ordinances, the city began using Muti. Says Muti sides. They're supposed to be Muti codes, self-publishing software in late twenty eighteen, which allows city staff to compile and maintain the changes online on the city website. However, the reference to Franklin Legal Publishing Incorporated was not removed from section one dot one zero one. At the time of the changeover, the amendment makes no substantive changes to the city's ordinances other than removal of the reference to the prior publisher. Questions, comments? Seems straightforward to me.
Very straightforward, yeah.
I'm surprised this actually has to come to us for consideration, but. Seems like. Do what?
Every ordinance has to come to you.
Could, could this be a consent agenda item?
That was going to be my next thing. It probably could have been a consent agenda. But it's not, so.
Yes, uh, I'm looking at the ordinance itself and in the third, whereas it refers to unicide. So I'd just like to clarify, is it unicide or Unicode? If it's Unicode.
I can't have it in there twice wrong. Sorry, I'll fix that. It's Unicode.
Okay.
I know muticide sounds like some kind of pesticide or, I don't know. Killer, something. Fine, or right now on the, on the keyboard. I'm not a fan of anything that has side. Yeah. All right. Any other comments? Anybody from the audience have any comments? I, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we take, remove Franklin Legal Publishing, Inc. from ordinance number twenty-one, zero dash zero five dash twenty, dash question mark, question mark. We'll put those two, that numbers are.
I'll take that.
And there, if I might, I would make a motion to amend to make sure that it's corrected before this is done, that Unicode is, is to properly be in the.
It's properly.
All right, I have the motion by Counselor Williams and the second by Counselor Dava. Any further discussion? And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion carries unanimous. Number nine, for the May twenty twenty-one council meeting, the rules of procedure and policies and procedures, Subcommittee Arch Dabila, David Williams, Kevin Sullivan, bring back a rules of procedure document that contains the edits requested from the last meeting with the council liaison and committee policies and procedures hold it in as well. The intention is for resolution eighteen dash seventeen forty-eight to be removed and the rules of procedure updated. Questions? Let me see here. Bring mine forward.
Mayor, by my. Yes, but just quick comments. Um, we went back and, and took care of all the things that, that nobody had made a comment on before. We accepted those. We, and then I put into place those items that had been brought up to us during the last meeting. The other thing that we did is, uh, article number four, um, w- we changed the, the naming a- as was requested. But the other thing that we did was is, uh, we, we recognized that the items that were listed were not reflective of how we actually operated our meetings as far as the order was concerned and what was included. So we did reorder all the items on there in article four to make sure that they correctly reflected how we're currently conducting our meetings. And I think I might have had to create one um, or two of those to reflect things that had not been, um, listed there. So just FYI, we did undertake that as well as part of our effort.
All right, thank you. So. Anybody have a question for the committee?
He was not present down there.
Yes.
One, which I hadn't noticed until you just made that comment, uh, Mr. Sullivan, uh, section four point ten is, is still in there and is a repeat. You did a reorder and placed it in the correct location, but I think four point ten now should go away because citizen comments on non-agenda items appears twice.
Oh, got it. Okay.
And then approval of the minutes typically is a consent agenda item, so you may want to.
And we did talk about that. And the reason why we left it, if there, if for whatever reason, the, uh, minutes were approved outside of the consent agenda, uh, that's the order that it would come in.
Okay, and, and that's great. Um, i- i- in general, thank you very much. I, I saw, you know, a, a lot of my comments in here and, and having the redline version was extremely helpful. Really, the only other, uh, comment or question that I have is, uh, I had, um, raised one of the Rosenberg motions, the motion to replace, um, and so.
So no.
I'm expecting you, motion to substitute. And, and so I see that's not in here, so maybe you can just explain the, the thinking behind not including that one.
So we absolutely talked about that. And when researched exactly what that motion was and how it operated, our understanding of how that motion operated is, is that a, a, a motion would be put forward, seconded, and then someone would put forward a motion to, uh, substitute. They. No, to substitute. And, and that would be, um, taken care of before the item that was originally brought up, could be vote, would be voted on. In fact, if that one is voted on, the first one is, is not considered at all. And, and our thought was is that if someone puts forward a motion and it gets seconded, it should have, it should be considered and voted on. Uh, and then someone should not be able to step on top of that and substitute. So again, we did talk about it, but we just thought that it was appropriate, more appropriate that if a motion's put forward and seconded, that it should be voted on.
Okay, and, and I guess the, the, the thinking why that, I'm okay with that because during the discussion on the original motion, it's always possible for a person to say, I'm going to vote against this because I want to do this motion instead. And, and if everyone agrees with that, that's sort of a indirect way of doing a substitution. So I think, I think it's possible to work with it, with it as, as you've, as you have it written here.
Okay, perfect. Uh, we just thought that, that the original maker of that motion in the second deserved the right to have a vote on their motion. Yeah.
Good. Thank you, Subcommittee. It was a good, good update.
I, I want, one addition, um, just in looking at, at this, after we had the discussion on the, the page, page four that has the table of motions and points of order, it has that, uh, says page nineteen, it's really twenty-three.
I'm sorry, I was writing it up. Let's say that one more time. Okay.
Here on page four that has at the very end, table of motions and points of order, that is being page nineteen. Uh, if you look at the document, it's actually page twenty-three.
Got it.
Minor technical.
Uh, okay, I will go in and take care of that. And, um, for, uh, city staff, just FYI, I'll go through and accept all the changes and give you a clean document when it comes to you. And, and the other thing that I comment that I would make is, I will likely, uh, that, that section there, number seven, I believe, it's not formatted the same way as the previous sections with its numbering and so forth. I, I'll likely go back and make sure that it is, uh, presented in the same way as the rest of the sections.
All right, let me see, I'm not looking at my screen. Yes, Council Marion.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, um, I didn't really have any comments on the top section, um. However, I did have, um, comments, um, quite a few actually, in the second section about, um, council liaison, because, um, language from last time this was brought to us to this time has, in some cases, changed. Um, and so, um, I don't know if, if you want me to go through all of those, um, questions and potential edits that I have. Um, now?
Yeah, because otherwise how would we know?
Okay, then, um, just wanted to make sure somebody's got a, a way to track this, but, so, um, on, looks like page nineteen of the document, under council liaison, um, the first sentence is just, um, not grammatically correct, so I was just going to offer a suggestion to fix it. Should be written with city council approval, a council member may serve as the city council's liaison for a calendar year, I'm sorry, as the city council's liaison, I E. representative to an organization for a calendar year and may be reappointed for subsequent years. So that for a calendar year up to subsequent years needs to go to the end of the sentence. Um, that's the first one. Under the council liaison procedures, there was, um, there was a sentence removed, um, from that first paragraph, but it's not in track changes. So the sentence that was removed was the one about hair must be taken to, yada, 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 um, you know, being sure not to violate the appearance of fairness doctrine. Um, and so I was just kind of wondering why that was struck and why we don't see it in track changes here as having been struck. Um, is that, was that not legally correct or?
I, I can shit some light on that. Uh, so these were two separate documents, uh, and the changes were tracked in the secondary document. When I pulled those changes into the rules of procedure document, everything showed up as a change and, and I, I couldn't, uh, I mean, that wasn't going to do anybody any good. And so what I ended up doing was is accepting that entire block and then going back and the, and the requested changes I highlighted in red, uh, that's just, it, it's not a true track changes, it's just a, a red coloring on the font. Uh, that, so that's a, a overall explanation for why you're not seeing track changes in this portion. The, the second, or answer to your second question with the fairness doctrine, we actually talked with Aaron about this, and it's not something, th- th- it was something that was picked up when Arch kind of copied from another document. Turned out that that's not something germane to Texas, and so we just removed the reference to it.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Um, and then, um, so, um, at the la- the last time we reviewed these, uh, we talked about possibly hyperlinking other documents that might be mentioned within these rules of procedures so that folks don't have to go track those down somewhere, just kind of reiterating um, that. So that just for ease of folks finding it. I made that note down in the select and replacing and training of committee members section.
Well, that, that fairness doctrine, I, as I went back through it, it seemed like the fairness doctrine was the only one that we would have linked to, and it's been removed, so.
Okay, I'm, I'm just making sure that, that if there's anything else, because that, the other ones I saw were really more broad, but just making sure that if there are any that we link, um, then. Under selecting committee officers at the very bottom of page twenty. I would strike that that number one. You don't have a number two, so. So the the proper format for that would just be not to put a number. So it just it would just be a sentence by itself with no number in front of it. Then. Under that next section, planning and reporting of the annual work plan of the committee. I was a little confused by this part in red. But do develop work plans to update ordinances. They have their work plan brought to them. I guess my question is, it seems ambiguous, like they have their work plan brought to them by who? And then. They develop their own work plans in addition to that. That just seemed a little fuzzy, so I just wondered if that could be clarified somehow. And then under the preparing and publishing of the agenda. The paragraph B that's in red. There's a period where I think there should be a comma. So after the the first sentence, the first line. Included on a board, comma, committee, comma, or commission's agenda. That then that would take that capital O that should be a lowercase and make it lowercase if that period is changed to a comma. Same line, he will bring that item to the council liaison who will present it. To the committee chair, it's an agreement issue between the subject and the verb. Okay, so. Oh, same sentence. Instead of upcoming agenda, remember last time we talked about very next regular meeting? Very next regular meeting agenda? I have a question here. In that same sentence. Will present it to the committee chair for inclusion on the very next regular meeting agenda instead of upcoming agenda.
Red in one.
Oh, I said.
Yep, third line in the red. Yep. And then. I have a question on this one. So actually on C. If an item is presented by the council liaison, the committee or chair cannot reasonably withhold the item from the agenda. And I wondered, there was some language in the prior version that had, you know, put some like they can't reasonably withhold it, but there may be times where it might be appropriate to have additional conversation or reconsider whether something should be put on the agenda. And I wondered if we could put that caveat there. But I think the bigger question, oh, go ahead.
We talked about this last time, and the whole idea of the committees is that they're there to serve the council. And and the thought was is that if a council liaison asks for an item to be on the agenda, it shouldn't be denied.
So I think it shouldn't be reasonably denied. I don't know that in every case it must be approved, but. So the bigger question here with this section, I wonder if we look at ordinance eighteen dash seventeen forty-eight, paragraph E. Which mentions about the chair having the ultimate authority to set the agenda. Would this new document conflict with that ordinance?
They don't have.
And if so, would the ordinance then need to be revised? What's that?
They don't have the ultimate authority. They have the ultimate responsibility. It's their task to complete.
So this this what what is suggested here wouldn't in any way conflict with that ordinance? We wouldn't have to make any edits or adjustments to that ordinance?
I I don't see the how it conflicts.
Let's see, Aaron, stand up.
That ordinance is going away.
Yes. Yes, Aaron.
So first of all, it's not an ordinance, and so if this was adopted as ordinance, it would supersede. And then I think the intent is to repeal that resolution when adopted.
Okay, so that one will be repealed. And that that was my question is if we'd have an issue with there being some sort of conflict between the two, so we would not.
Yeah, if you the header, it said that eighteen seventeen forty-eight goes away and only in the rules that are updated.
Okay. Just just making sure. And then. There was some new language, but I didn't have an issue with it. Oh. I have a question mark under E in that same section. And the very last line where it says, you know, and then forwarding to the appropriate city staff for legal posting and update. To the city website. Does that just mean is that repetitive legal posting and update? Or I just wasn't sure what what we meant by add update?
Update the city website.
Appropriate city staff for legal posting.
Because.
Could it just be legal posting to the city website?
So when they do a legal posting, I believe that's when they post it out on the outside poster board. That when they post it to the city website, I don't believe that's the legal post.
Right.
So I'm we're saying they got to do the legal posting, which is to post the paperwork out on the poster board out front, but also to make updates to the city website.
Actually, now.
That wasn't clear to me from the way that's written. I wonder.
Yes, Aaron.
The legal posting.
Legally required now.
Both?
Because we have a website, we have to post it. Yes, sir.
So is it duplicative for for it that sounds to be both?
Yes.
Okay, so it could just say legal posting and and there.
Right. Maybe so. Okay, then. Under number three, same section. Very last few words where it says items to committee members. Get rid of the comma and put an and and council liaison. And then. Oh, and then under, okay, so under the next one, subcommittee. Number three, the one in red, should open meetings act requirements should open meetings act be capitalized?
Yes.
Okay. And then I think that's it. The only other comment I have was it looks like there might be some spacing that we could take care of at the top of the pages to move things up a little bit. There's some like dangling stuff, and I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, Mary.
There's one point of clarification in, let me see if I can scroll back and find it, and it came up. I noticed it because Council Marion's comments. It has to do with. Developing work plan. So on page fifty of the packet, page twenty-one of the document under planning and reporting of annual work plan. The. State mandated mandated commissions generally have the work plan brought to them, but do work develop work plans to update ordinances. The Board of Adjustment doesn't have the authority to change ordinances, so it wouldn't be appropriate to for them to have that. This wouldn't apply to them. Their ordinances come as a result of the. Planning and zoning commission and then your approval of them. So it's a unique weirdness because they have specific legislative authority that's laid out in the government code.
So instead of saying state mandated, should we call out planning and zoning and building and standards?
Probably be clearer if you did that. Yes.
Okay.
And I I guess I would suggest, Kevin, based on the confusion that Ms. Marion had earlier, you might also simply say, but also. Or do also develop work plans to update ordinances. You know, it's a sum of the two. And hopefully that helps.
Yeah, and who brings the work plan to them?
It's brought. Work plans as far as the P and Z are all the different public hearings that come their way. You know, the only only thing that. As far as a work plan that's in addition to that would be them working on possible changes to new ordinances or something like that. But most of what's brought to them on their agenda is developed by what's brought to developmental services or public, you know, on planning and zoning. It's so it's it's not something that they sit around a room and kind of develop. It's kind of given to them that here's the issues that you have to deal with that have been brought, and you have a certain amount of time to address it before the state kicks in. So it's not something that they sit down and develop a work plan on. The only thing they develop a work plan on is the order of which they're going to deal with possible ordinances, whether they're going to deal with fences first or changing. Subdivision ordinance or something like that.
May I suggest one edit?
Yeah.
Maybe deleting the word plan after work in that first part of the sentence, generally have their work brought to them, but do develop work plans to update ordinances.
Yeah. Yep, that's fine. That'd be great.
I feel like I'm on a roller coaster.
Yeah. Going to the top. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I make a suggestion that one and I go make these final changes? And instead, let's not approve it tonight. I'll go make the final changes. We'll bring it back one more time, and and it should be clean at that point, very minor discussion, and then we can approve it to as an update. Is that sound appropriate?
That sounds very appropriate, and I was even going to say we can tentatively post. We've gone through it twice now. We probably listed it as a consent agenda, and then as everybody's reviewing it, if there's something, we can always pull it out.
Okay. Got it. Yeah, I should be able to make the changes happen already for the next meeting.
Okay.
Please make a motion.
So, yeah, that does take a motion to table to.
Do you need to ask for public comments first before I make?
Oh, I guess I better. Does the audience have any comments on agenda item number nine?
I think this topic puts him to sleep.
All right, I'll bring it back to council for a motion.
Mayor, I will make a motion that we table this item until the next agenda.
All right, I have the motion by Counselor Sullivan and motion and the second by Counselor Davidoff. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Hear none, the motion is tabled. Ananamous. All right, consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are to be considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Number ten, approval of the April first, twenty twenty-one regular meeting minutes and the April fourteen, twenty twenty-one special call meeting minutes.
Mayor, I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
All right, I have a motion by Counselor Sullivan and the second by Counselor Weatherly. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Hear none, consent agenda is approved unanimous. All right, we go to number eleven. End our discussion items. Let's see here. Number eleven. Cap Metro update. Cap Metro is our mass transit system that we are a member of. Cap Metro is due to receive approximately eight hundred thousand dollars in sales tax from the city of Lago Vista in twenty twenty-one. They provide flyer two fourteen, which goes to the Lakeline train station and back with stops in between, and they offer the they provide the pickup service, which. Does door to door pickup in, I don't know, maybe seventy-five percent of the city, according to their response plan. Currently. State law says we can not order an election, a real an election to consider getting out of Cap Metro until five years after an election was held. So an election was held in November of twenty sixteen. I cannot order an election until after November twenty twenty-one. So the earliest that we could have an election. Would be in May of twenty twenty-two. That would be a special call election. For us would require additional funding, even though it's a general election, because it's not one of our typical elections, it would cost us some money to put it on there, especially. To be on the general election in May of twenty twenty-two, but that is the earliest that we can do it. As you know, we have proposed changes to the state legislation three times. Twenty seventeen, it died on the floor. Twenty nineteen. Was not submitted at all by our our representative. Twenty twenty-one, I took it to our state representative and state senator, and again, they both refused to. To make any changes. Their reasoning this year was because we can hold an election within the next calendar year. So they're like, we didn't, they didn't feel like it needed to be changed because we can vote in twenty twenty-two. But having said that. You know. Future council could decide if the citizens vote to stay in in twenty twenty-two. I mean, do we ever want to bring it back again or not? You know, that would be twice that the citizens have voted to stay in, so. So the legislation was not changed. So. We formed a subcommittee to work on this. However, we've had so much. Stuff going on that we have, the subcommittee has not met because we really don't have anything to look at just yet. A, we're waiting on the outcome of our possible legislation. And then in some of the conversations that I did, I've discovered doing our research is that. The federal government establishes what they call UAZs, urban area zones. And the way the federal dollars are. Distributed to transit systems is based on that urban zone. We currently are not in the urban in the UAZ. It's based on. Population and as population grows, that UAZ expands. The thought process from some of the people I've spoke to is that with the results of the twenty twenty census. The Austin Round Rock Metropolitan Urban Zone will now. Include Lago Vista. The issue with that is. We cannot seek out other. Government funded providers. So what I was looking at was carts. Cart is really big in the area. I think they pretty much dominate, if not if they're not the only one that provides alternative transportation systems to Cap Metro. However, they legally cannot provide services in a UAZ. So if Lago Vista becomes part of the UAZ, we cannot go to companies like Cart City longer. Cap Metro contracts with. Cart to provide some of their services, but we. But we cannot contract directly with carts.
So we still be done with.
Yeah, so. So if the way it's looking, again, it depends on the census. If we get into the UAZ and then we put this up for election and the citizens choose to get out of Cap Metro, we would be looking at funding any type of trend, transportation system on our own. Or we could contract with Cap Metro. Cap Metro would probably contract with carts to provide the services out here. So we would end up getting carts, just we wouldn't be contracting with them directly. I'm waiting to see, right now, I'm still kind of on hold because I'm waiting for the census to come out and tell us whether we're going to be in this UAZ or not. If we are, you know, then we would start looking at, we would start reaching out to Cap Metro and seeing, you know, what options we would have available to us. Other cities like Brown Rock, you know, they do contract directly from Cap Metro, but they're not in Cap Metro. They don't, they're not subject to the one cent sales. So it is possible that we could still vote to exit membership of Cap Metro and then subcontract, contract back with Cap Metro. And it would be at a cost savings, it would be at a fixed price, not fluctuating along with our sales tax. And I think this is definitely something we still need to consider because as we grow, you know, if we, we went up 38% last year. I don't know exactly what percentage we're sitting at this year. But if we continue to have, you know, huge growth in our sales tax and we're not getting any additional services, it would still be financially beneficial to contract for what we actually want. I'm thinking we, the pickup service that only covers 75% of the city right now. You know, it doesn't go to lakeside, doesn't get anything south of Boggy Ford Road. Everybody in the Highland Lake area does not have access to it, really. Airport Hill, areas that aren't, you know, we can contract better for those services. So that's where we're at right now. I've been in conversation with the carts general manager to a lot of this. He's helping me. But we're, basically, we're both waiting to see what the census does to us before we can bring anything to the subcommittees.
Is, is the decision of whether we're in the UAZ or not a political decision? Or is it strictly a math formula that someone's got to look at?
I am told it's strictly a math formula. It's a population driven sum.
And what is that figure?
Well, that I don't know. I did not ask the actual, because it it changes, you know, every time the census changes, it it grows. So there's not like a definite number. Because you would think it would shrink if.
I wonder if it has something to do with the density of the population between us and Austin. So if it gets to a certain density level between us and there, we just get subsumed into that UAZ.
That would be more along the lines.
Yeah. And Mayor, it seems like our other option, and we haven't talked a whole lot about it, is for us to, you know, come up with our own service that that we provide. And what would that cost be? And it certainly seems like that's an option that we will want to investigate.
Right.
Because if we can do it for 400,000, and we're giving 800,000 and we could maybe cost us 600,000 per cart. Obviously, we'd want to do it ourselves for the 400 if we can make that.
Yes, those are definitely still out there. We just gotta, hopefully we'll know soon. I don't know why they've released the numbers for the nation, but yet when you go to click on your actual city, it's, it's nothing. So how can they know the nation, the number for the nation, but not know the smaller breakdown? I don't know. So, Councilor Marion.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of quick things on this one. Thank you for the update, by the way, but. So my first question is, how much does it cost to order a May election? Seems like likely we would just wait until next November and put this on the ballot. But I'm just curious if you have any ballpark estimate to what it costs to order a May election? That's one question. And then another question I have. I know when we were encouraging folks to fill out the census, Laguna Vista was really low as far as response rate goes. I think we were at like 24% or something the last I remember. So I wonder if that will have anything to do, perhaps, obviously, it's going to impact the UAZ one way or the other. But the last I recall, I just remember us being very low as far as response rate goes. And maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong there. Last question I have is, can you just remind folks who all is on the subcommittee for Cap Metro? I know I am.
Yes, so Councilor Sullivan, yourself, myself, on the subcommittee. I don't recall because we haven't had a May election since 2015. I don't remember what it cost, but I'm pretty sure it was in the tens of thousands.
I thought I heard 10 to 15.
Yeah. It's fairly expensive, but then that would be something, you know, that we would look at if, depending on when it took effect, you know, if we were saving more in, let's say, over six months from May of 2020, of 22 to November of 22, if the sales tax savings is greater than the cost for the May election, you know, it might be worth going ahead and putting it on May. If not, then we just, we can wait till November.
Well, the other thing to take into account, the net financial obligation and its growth.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's something else. Councilor Sullivan, the net financial obligation continues to grow, which is, seems weird to me that we're contributing more, but yet we still owe more. I don't, I don't get it. Oh, and as far as the percentage, I don't want to say that was a scam, because I don't know, but I don't think they ever updated that because we had a representative that would contact us and would tell us we were closed or we're, you know, he would never really give us a percentage, but they were doing door to door campaigns, they were doing other things and, you know, they did not express, you know, worries that we were only getting 24% of our citizens to contribute. The website would always show very low, but for some reason, the actual representative didn't echo those sentiments. So I don't know how accurate that 24% was, but we're, we're going to see. We'll see when the numbers come out. The numbers that they give us are as of April 1st, 2020. Of course, we're looking, we are now in 2021. We're at 4,600 residential accounts, you know, water utility accounts. You look at what's an average household in Laguna Vista. Let's just, you know, let's just say it's two people. Or three people, let's put a kid there, three people. Take out the number of vacation homes, rental homes. Even if we dropped it down to 4,000 utility accounts, three people, we're looking at 12,000 people in Laguna Vista. I don't know that we're that high, but whatever number comes out in the census, I'm thinking it's going to be in the 8,400 range. I'm thinking it's going to be at least 1,000 short of where we are now.
Mayor, so I believe the estimate that I remember a few years ago hearing is when the Census Bureau looks at the number of households, they estimate the population to be 2.58 number of people residing in residences. Yes, so the question I would have is, if they come in at a much lower figure than what we suspect we are at, can we challenge that? Is there a method for doing that? Because appropriation is, is key here, isn't it?
Yes, and I don't know if there's any, I'd have to research that. I don't know if there's a, I don't know if there's a way to challenge it or not.
I don't know. I would think if there is, it'd be a cumbersome process.
I would think it would be a very expensive process.
Yeah.
Because the one you'd have to do is get people to come back in and redo the census.
That's all guesswork.
Yeah, I'm not saying what you, your point is valid. I'm just scared, scared of what the process might be like to actually do it.
If the appropriations is a significant figure then.
Sure.
Yeah, I was just, while we're discussing, I was looking to see. Does anybody know what the difference between Laguna Vista City and Laguna Vista CDP is? Yep, no, it's still showing, still showing 2019.
They didn't have census people that went to people's houses. We get no control from them.
Well, no, because, just, well, maybe.
I'm taking Dave's job of trying to move us along.
The census is a big part of Cap Metro.
Right.
Anyway.
Yes.
All right.
We'll have to see what happens.
Shalane, we can, we can probably send an email to Star and they, she can look back through our records and see what a May election did cost. That was again, six years ago. I don't know what it cost us now. Anybody from the audience have any thoughts on Cap Metro? Yes, Diane.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor. I just wanted to, I thought of one other potential significance with regard to the May, a potential May special election. And that is, in addition to the, the, the potential cost versus a tax due savings, offsetting, offsetting each other. There's also, I think, the factor of in a special called election of the unique ability to focus on the, the situation as opposed to the general election. And I think a lot, a significant, well, not a lot, but a significant portion of, of the results of this particular topic, the election on this particular topic, is at least potentially due to the lack of interest or lack of knowledge or lack of publica, publicity with regard to it, or a lack of seeing options. Instead of just losing something, what options were there? But in a special called election, we would have time to be able to publicize and present and get together tangible options for the public to absorb in that narrow scope of a special election.
Right.
So that was just one other point.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, we will move to number 13. Last discussion. Discussion regarding the Rusia Island Airport Funding Agreement and Request for Exemption. There, yes.
I move that we table this agenda item.
I'll second. All right, I have motion to table the Council of Pratt and the second by Councilor Sullivan. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion to table Passage Nance. And we go to future agenda items. So real quick, before we actually get into agenda items, I have a question. We have a lot on our table for Thursday, June 3rd. We're going to be here all day. Do we have, would there be interest, anybody interested in just counseling the June 3rd council meeting altogether? If we don't have anything that's important? I mean, right now, I see Shalane has a animal cruelty discussion on for June 3rd. We have the comprehensive master plan subcommittee tentatively scheduled for June 3rd. Let's see.
Rules of procedure could come back, but it could come back.
We could do it on June 17th if you want.
Yeah, that is, that is all that I, that's all I got in my notes.
Yeah.
I don't have anything else, so I.
Well, I personally think it'd be a whole lot better to just focus on trying to get a new city manager and not have to worry about the meeting. It's going to be a long day, there's going to be a lot of things to do.
I mean, looking at it, the agenda.
Conversation.
Currently looking at it, the agenda would probably be short, but, you know, if we start at 8 o'clock in the morning, whatever time.
We can always have a special call election, special call meeting if needed.
Yeah, some thumbs up.
So I see Ms. Silveta's hand in the air.
Yeah, so there's not anything that I'm aware of that legally you have to consider on that date. I don't believe Roy has any applications that have time sensitivity. But one thing you might consider is if you have your candidates here, they might want to sit in and see how our council functions. So just a thought, food for thought. Especially if you have your master plan on, on the agenda.
We've captured it on video for years.
Yeah, they can see a ton of our action on video.
If they're really interested.
I tend to agree with you, Mayor. It's like, listen, and what Councilman said, let's focus on getting a good new city manager. And, you know, if something special comes up that we've just got to do, we can, we can hold it, but otherwise, I might, I may sense just to.
Do we need, do we have everything in place? I know we're meeting with the candidates during the daytime. Do we need to come together for an executive session? Does that need to be called up explicitly?
It's, it's, yes.
It's already in that?
Well, that is already scheduled. We have not posted it yet, but yes, it will be, the entire day will be executive session and we will.
Yes, around the candidates, okay.
Yes. So we'll start with the open meeting, then go into executive session. Come out, we'll have to, we have the last hour or half hour, I guess, is the negotiation or the narrowing down to the two finalists. And we'll do it again on Friday.
And Mayor, when we did this last time, it seems like we held one of our sessions, interview sessions over at the police station conference room. Do you know if we intend to do that again or will we be here?
We'll have to determine that. Because it is an executive session, staff is working all day on Thursday. Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to look at the location. Make sure we know where that's at. All right. So future agenda items.
Do you need a motion?
I mean,
Do not have the meeting?
In a minute. I'm still, because we're still working on this agenda item, so we can move this to like the 17th.
You can put the rules of procedure there. I'll go ahead and make the changes and update the document and get it to staff so they'll have it regardless of when it comes up on the agenda.
Let's see. Street rehab? Yes. That for the 17th. What else? Now, how are we going to stay till midnight if nobody comes up with any agenda items? That's all right.
I have one question. Is there any way that I can get the comprehensive master plan to everybody before the June 17th meeting? So people can make their changes and then when we come to the June 17th, we can have the discussion on it and it's not, you're just getting the package and you're looking at it. And I'd rather people up here on the diocese have an opportunity to really look at the information. I have some things that I think are missing from comprehensive plan that need to be added into the comprehensive plan. But I'd like to know if there's a way, unless I could just send it out to everybody or give it to you and you send it out to everybody.
Well, it's online, you know, so if they can look at the electronic version anytime they want, but if you're.
Well, it's not online yet.
He's talking about his.
I'm not talking about the rules. I'm not talking about the rules of procedure. I'm talking about the comprehensive master plan.
Yeah, if I can clarify, this is the report out from the comprehensive master plan subcommittee. And what, what David was asking can, can. That report early. Yes.
I think we need to be careful about getting beyond what were future agenda items.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, so staff can be of assistance in distributing things, but if we're going to put it on the agenda.
All right. What else?
Do we, so we've got some big plans that are in flight, was, you know, water master plan, wastewater master plan, the road traffic analysis, thoroughfare plan. And it seems like those have been out there for a while. I don't know when. Obviously, we want to see them as soon as we can, but that, that, those need to be on the agenda, you know, as soon as they're available.
Anybody else? All right. Well, if that is all the consideration, I will entertain a motion for the council. I move to adjourn.
Mayor, I move that we cancel or not hold the council meeting on two weeks from, from today.
The June 3rd.
June 3rd.
One second.
All right, I have the motion by Counselor Pratt and the second by Counselor Weatherly. Any further discussion? And all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Hearing none. June 3rd, regularly scheduled council meeting has been canceled. And with that being said, I call this meeting adjourned at 9:25 PM.